We're a little late, but we'll call this executive meeting in order. And if it's okay, Dr. Aguilar, first of all, you have any, any opening comments?
No, sir.
In that case, if it's okay with my fellow members, we'll go to the bus-riding software. I think we have a presentation. I see you sitting there and we'll, if you, if you like, you can make your presentation now. We'll kind of put you first.
This is Mr. Lance Guy with Versatrans Tyler Industries. Got a button right there on the middle of, yeah, there you go.
Okay, thank you very much for having me. My name is Lance Guy, G-U-Y. I reside in Houston, grew up in southwest Louisiana, for the most part, however, so kind of a homecoming. I work for Tyler Technologies and we are a software company providing software to municipalities on, for the most, well, exclusively. And then my division is called Versatrans. That's the commercial name of our products for transportation specifically. And I came to you, we came to you as a company over the course of a year or so. Your transportation department has been seeking potentially an alternative to what your incumbent software is, and they were exploring alternatives. So my intent today was to introduce our company and maybe if it's okay, go over the products that are proposed and entertain any questions and hopefully answer them. Is there a timeframe or a pace? I can go at fifteen, but the demo, this is ours. So let's, let's try to go at a rapid pace and please stop me with any questions. Okay, our company is Tyler Technologies. We're a publicly traded company out of Dallas, Plano technically, a large national company with a lot of finance and HR software. Munis is one of them. The CPAs in the room might recognize some of the products from Tyler. And then my division is Versatrans, which was acquired by Tyler some years ago as the, like I said, the transportation arm. We're a prominent national provider of these transportation products, this suite that I will show you. Like you said, we're in Dallas, we have a large national footprint. I have provided ten of our Louisiana customers, some of which are your size, you're a large one, but of similar operational scope as references to the district. And what is proposed thus far, it's a little, it's fairly complex in that there are a lot of modules that are anchored by this one foundation. And this is a graphical depiction of the software modules, and they're all anchored by the one at the top called Routing and Planning. And this is a product that puts students at stops based on walk parameters, but also does district and boundary planning quite well for reasons of growth, new buildings. And it would let you get to the downstream transportation effect rather easily. It has some analytical what-if scenario capability that can be run very quickly. And my understanding is now your current provider is doing that within like a consultant form. And our software really is meant to be used by the user, not, not require a consultant or an additional charge. So we'll get into the routing and planning in the next slide or two. To the right of that, there's an information portal that we call E-Link, and you have a similar product now where the parents and campuses can look up ridership information without having to call transportation with questions like, where is my stop? You know, and the child's daily manifest, whether it be a special program or just home-to-school route. And that's a read-only portal that looks into the routing and planning product. And then as we did some due diligence here at Lafayette Parish, we realized field trips are very onerous in the amount of work that's being done. It's very manual and with thirty-some-odd thousand students and lots of trips here, we are strongly recommending that you purchase a field trip module. It actually is the same database as the planning piece. So it became clear early on, if you're looking to replace the, the foundation, which is the routing and planning piece, it would make sense to buy all the pieces from one vendor, whether it's us or another. These, these modules reside in the same database for the most part, and all the student information comes over from one to the other, so they talk. But the trips here is a critical piece, I've found out. Fleet maintenance does everything from preventive maintenance to warranty to tracking fuel. Your Fuel Man fuel card can be imported into our fleet transportation maintenance product called Fleet Vision. And then we were potentially looking at a disciplined reporting product that we have called Incident Management. And these are all cafeteria-style. The one on the top really is not, it's, that's the foundation. But the others are kind of cafeteria. So Mr. Guidry and Craig, Mr. Craig are kind of weighing the options here. And so what's proposed here, because of the nature and the fairly long implementation of this core product up top, it requires a 911 or a parish map. And then we digitize it and we make it school bus friendly, and we put school bus speeds on the streets so they all time out properly with the routes. It's a three-month project that we handle ninety percent of it and with the district's input. So there's a, we timed this out and did a project plan to try and see if we can get to school start comfortably and have the users be using it in spring, late spring, not in August before school starts. So our plan was to try and, if we were to partner with the district, be lucky enough to do so, do this in a way that's comfortable and makes sense and does not create chaos in school startup. So excuse me one second, I'm gonna get my water. So like I said, the core product is this routing and planning product, and it requires a map that is fully customized to meet the needs of the parish. And we will fully customize the map to the point where we'll put in school bus speeds and we'll do one ways and all your hazardous routes. It does aliases so that Highway seventy-eight can also be Main Street, and it'll, it'll plot the student on the map. If you have a new student, it'll talk from your information system daily, bring in the new students and put them on the map. Currently, your current product does that. It's a product you've had for, I think, maybe decades or quite a long time. But to my understanding, it doesn't geocode well, and there's some things that we can improve upon fairly dramatically, whether that be a nightly import from your student information system, weekly, however you'd want to do it. Nightly is optimal. So the routing and planning piece, like I said, requires a map, requires quite a bit of project management on our side. It'll be a school bus map. Cars can go left where school, where school buses can't. So if you had turnover in the department, that school bus map stays with the district and is not tribal knowledge in someone's head, which often happens when you get turnover in transportation. If the map isn't right, that's where things start to become inconsistent, in my experience. Any questions on the routing and planning module? Okay, that's the key piece. The E-Link portion is a read-only access that anyone can look up by zip code. You can put whatever permissions you want on the user so they can see as much or as little information as they need to see, whether it be a parent, student, principal, realtor. But it's a read-only look into the routing information and the ridership information of the student. Any questions on the E-Link piece? Okay, so that's module number one. Module number two here is called Trip Tracker, and our field trip software is truly one of the best ones, if not the best one on the market. Been in the school bus industry for ten years in a different capacity where I've dealt with all the vendors, and this is a very strong product, I know for a fact. It can be standalone, but it also talks to the routing and planning. It brings in all the student information and it's a, it manages the lifecycle of the field trip. Now you've got at least one full-time body, really, it's what I can tell more than that when you do the reconciling and the accounting from the, from the campus level all the way to accounting. Your, your processes could be better organized in a, in a piece of software such as this. So Trip Tracker will allow the user at the campus to get an estimate. It'll go out to Bing and it'll do a point A, point B, point C, point D, and do a rough map, rough estimate, fuel and time. I know a lot of your drivers are contracted, but you'll have a rough estimate that comes from the campus, then goes to transportation. And then they'll reconcile and put the budget code in there. But we did some, I think we're on our third demo, and we did a full hour and a half with just this product with folks in transportation. And there's some coding that you didn't have that we can provide that was gonna help a lot. Sorry, went the wrong way. Fleet Vision is our product that does very extensive reporting on your fleet. I know a lot of your fleet is contracted. I think it's kind of gravitating towards board-owned, from what I can tell. You have a very dynamic situation here with some contracted drivers, some board fleet, some contracted fleet. So I think honestly, a good fleet software here would prove to be a good return on your investment quickly. It integrates with your Fuel Man card, so all your fuel data could come in as well, and you can track that. And I know you track per mile or you reimburse per mile, and there's some things I think you can get from this Fleet Vision software as well. Any questions on the Fleet Vision software? And again, we've been through this with transportation for a better part of three to four demos over the last almost year. It was requested upon us to, it was asked if we had a product that did incident management, and this slide is a little bit small. But for example, bullying or a bus accident, heaven forbid, somebody throws something on a window, gum or whatever, it needs to have a protocol, it needs to be reported and have a protocol, and then have a reporting chain. And this is something called Tyler Incident Management that can be as global or granular as you need it to be, but it creates a reporting hierarchy and a, a history of an incident. And then it can report after you get some data in the system over the course of a year, how many, what type of incident quickly, and who was notified automatically and what was done. So if an administrator gets a call and something's been dealt with already three or four times, that information will at least be visible. Any questions on the incident management piece? Okay, and this is cafeteria-style, like I said, beyond the first core product. We have, aside from incident management, we actually had a project, our project management team put a project plan in place with the, the first three core products to get you to a, an August startup very comfortably. And I think I shared that at one point, I didn't put it in this slide deck. It didn't include the incident management piece, that was a late-breaking add. But this is what it would look like for us, once we get that GIS map, that third bar down. There's a two- to three-month period where your school bus map is hosted in the cloud, and we do a lot of consulting and get it as perfect as we can make it. Tyler Technologies prides themselves, ourselves, on support. I think that might be part of why I'm here today or why your district is entertaining potentially a new vendor. And so these are some real metrics that we get from third-party, from our customer service department, which is in Albany, upstate New York for this, our product line. And we measure ourselves against the industry. And so here are some of our metrics I wanted to bring to you. We do have a ninety-eight percent customer retention rate, and ongoing support is critical. We're very reference-based, referral-based business. And the annual maintenance included in our proposal, of course, includes unlimited support. A little bit about our core product called Routing and Planning. It's a very mature, very stable product. It's been in the market for some time. The, the phone calls we get tend not to be, it's broken, they tend to be, I forgot how to do something. And so just to show you some of the activity and the latest releases of that Routing and Planning product, we do take customer requests and integrate them into the product quite often. So here's a good snapshot of that. And lastly, down the corner, Tyler Technology has an evergreen philosophy. So if we were, if we evolved beyond the routing and planning product to the next phase, we have something in the works called Traverse. So we've got new products coming down the pipe. If you're current with your license, you won't pay for that new product. This is big in, in software world, so it might be a twenty, forty thousand dollar bill for a major piece of software. If we come out with something new and you're current on your license, you get the new software when you're ready to have it, at your discretion, but you continue to pay maintenance. So it's on the website with Tyler. The evergreen philosophy is a very, a very strong reason to do business with Tyler, in my opinion. In that, that first slide, we had three yellow boxes, which were kind of phase two. And we've been talking to transportation and of course, you know, we want all the tools to help our customers and increase service and help us do our jobs. And we've kind of backed them off and said, there's a phase two, if you want GPS, and you want, we have this smartphone app that parents can get that shows the bus in real time coming to my doorstep if I'm in a slate. But you, it's a year-two thing. You really kind of have to buy the pieces, implement the pieces well upfront, the core pieces, to take this next step, in my opinion. And we'd much rather phase it in and get the big stuff right first and then maybe add on some of these value-add pieces that I would like to show you now. GPS has become almost a commodity now. It's, the hardware is very reliable, the cellular component is relatively affordable. And we sell a very, very strong GPS device that's plug-and-play, plugs into the OB port, gives engine diagnostics, can be up and running on a late-mono bus, ten minutes. You can be driving down the street and see you on the screen. So we sell a product from a company called Geotab. It's a very strong device, requires installation. It would require us to get a really detailed fleet list, which we're working on, to give you a quote. Some of the older buses have harnesses and cables, and they're not all plug-and-play. But we get a lot out of GPS. And in our proposal, our core proposal is something called On Screen, which is optional. But we have developed a piece of software that talks to our routing and planning software. And it's, it's somewhat GPS-agnostic. You could buy a different GPS product and still see your buses on our map. And so what you get from that is, in my experience in ten years that I've been calling on school transportation and in operations, the, the plan piece, the routing, and the GPS piece becomes siloed. There's two screens, there's a plan and then there's an actual. And there's a lot of buzz in the industry. We have plan versus actual, but it's seldom done well. So Tyler Versatrans developed a product called On Screen that will take in the GPS data, the lat-long data, and put it on your routing map and report against that. So what was the plan? And then in real-time, dispatch can see all the arrows on the screen. You can make a path report, of course, like there, there are ten companies that do GPS well, or there's a bunch of them. But ours is a little unique in that it's integrated with the routing component. So for example, in this screen, you'll see the, there's a percentage column. That didn't work. There's a percentage column that shows, I don't, don't really need to know about the people that are two or three percent off path by virtue of how often they go off the plan, but the, the large ones, thirty percent off, fifteen percent off, they're hyperlinked. You can look at it over here and see, well, here was the plan, and the driver took a different route. Why? Maybe it was a good thing, maybe not. But it gives you visibility and with, especially with a contracted driver force that's reimbursed per mile, I would, it's, it's good to know what the plan was and then what actually happened in the field. And so once you get the E-Link and the routing and planning and the GPS in place and they're running, we have an app that's free to parents. It's just an app in the Google or the Apple stores called My Stop. And so you can, your parent will sign up, sign in, and if they have multiple kids, you choose your kid on the, on the app, on the sign-in screen, which I'm not showing. And on the bottom here, it'll show you actual estimated time. So cold, wet day, you're standing out front, you don't, maybe you don't have to be if you know you've got ten minutes before the bus actually arrives. We have an app that does that, and it's, it's quite useful when you get to the point of being able to have the app. So you can also do broadcast notifications, bad weather, one-hour delay to all app users. Any questions on My Stop on the app? Okay, phase two. And this is a newly-launched device at the National Trade Show a few months ago, an in-cab device that manages payroll, but also provides turn-by-turn directions to the driver in the context of their route from routing and planning. Not Google, but really from the routing map, right turns. And when you pull up, I don't have all the screenshots, but it has the ability, when you pull up to a stop, it'll show the rider manifest, who's eligible at this stop. And if you have pictures in your student information system, the pictures will be there. So little kids, special needs, you might want to import the pictures on those, and they'll be on the driver manifest as well. But this is a very exciting product. It was built strictly to do this one thing. It's a ruggedized school bus tablet. Only our software resides on it, it doesn't have much street value. It's, we're, we're getting really, really warm reception within the industry. And one of the things I think what it does well is with driver shortages with sub-drivers. You buy fifty of them, you don't outfit the whole fleet, perhaps, you have ten of them. Because the tablet, you log in and it's wireless and has a cellular plan. When you log in, it, it knows, these are Lance's routes for the day. Here's my AM, here's my PM, here's my ESL run. And when you miss a stop, it'll route you back to your stop and then on to your destination. So exciting product, this is phase two. Of course, transportation, you know, we got to have it yesterday, but we're not there yet. You've got to have the, the core products in place and be up and running and using them well before conversations like this start to happen. But it's very exciting. And that concludes the product piece of the presentation. Thank you for being, letting me be here. We appreciate a chance to compete for your business. Certainly like to take another step if there is one. Any questions for me?
Yeah, I actually have a question for Mr. Evans.
Yes, sir.
It's just fairly simple. Is this a product that you're recommending to the, for us to recommend to the board for purchase?
Absolutely.
Is this going to make your job more efficient? How's it, and how does it compare cost-wise? And maybe that's a Mr. Guidry question annually.
As it sits right now, the, our software provider, it's like, it's like we're in the Dark Ages. It's, 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 it's a, it's something we've, we've been having for about fifteen years. We haven't changed, we haven't progressed, and, and it hasn't helped us. You know, getting, getting, getting to the, to the, to the, to the new things that we need to do in, in, in transportation. I'm very excited about this program, I really am. It's gonna help us with the calls that on, on the Friday afternoon, that we get, we, we get a call from a parent, you know, my, my child wasn't dropped off and they, they didn't get off the bus. Well, the bus already passed. Well, we have to, we have to start calling every single bus we have that's in the area to see if, to see if they, they got on the wrong bus. Even if they got on a bus, on a, on a particular bus, they, they have things in this particular program that actually clock kids on the bus. We know where they're at. They clock kids off the bus, we know where they're at. You know, there's, there's a lot of times during football season, I get a call that, hey, on, on Friday, and my, my kid didn't show up. Well, we found them at the football game. You know, they're, they're waiting to get in at the football game, and then tell their parents. And that's, that's, we have to find them at that, at that point. If, if, if we had this particular, particular software, software online, all we had to do was say, okay, they, they have a, they have a user ID number for this particular child, you punch it in. Well, you know what, they never got on a bus this afternoon. They went somewhere else. At least we know that, that, that quickly. And this, this actually helps us. GPS is a wonderful thing, it really is. It, it tells us where our buses go, when they go, how they go, how fast they go. Cause I, I can't tell you how many calls that, that I get that, you know what, your, your bus was speeding. Well, how do you know? You know, well, this, I know. You know, if somebody's speeding, I can say, yeah, we were speeding. I can correct that, correct that issue.
Are you able to capture the data? I mean, where you can go back in time and say, at this time, this bus was going this fast?
On, on most, on most programs, yes, but I don't know about, about this particular one.
Yeah, all of the good ones, yeah, absolutely. Yep, and usually the companies, typically the companies will store that data for a year or so. So you can go backwards and see bus fifty-seven on July seventeenth, that summer, January seventeenth, yes.
And during one of your presentations, I've actually, I've actually followed the bus for about ten minutes and saw exactly where, exactly what the speed was, where we turned right, where we turned left, where we went, when they dropped off, how many they, I mean, how long they were dropped off, their idle times. A lot, a lot of our things, we, we use a lot of diesel. You know, we're, we're a big parish. A lot of, we, we go through a couple of million dollars a year in diesel. Just by idle times, we can say, wait a minute, you're idling out of school, you're not supposed to idle. There's no, there's no way you can do that in the future. You're gonna, you're gonna cut it off because you're burning, burning five dollars' worth of diesel, just, just by, by idling there. That's, that's something, that's, that's an added, added benefit for us. Because, you know, we don't, we don't know where, where, where somebody's going or if they're going off, off, off route or staying on route or burning too much diesel or, you know, parking the bus where they're not supposed to park. If they're supposed to park it at, at a school, and they're not parking in a school, they're driving an extra five or ten miles, parking it somewhere else, that'll let us know.
Do we know the cost comparison? I assume we know the cost comparison to what we're using and what we want to use?
Yes, it, I couldn't, couldn't be a hundred percent because I don't have the figures in front of me. It's, it's, it's pretty comparable to, from, from what we, what we're doing in, with Edge Log to what we're gonna, we're gonna be doing with someone, someone else. It's, it's fairly, and, and the more modules and, and things that you add to it, and if, if, if the, the, the other company, say we go with another company, if they host, you know, the, all, all the information rather than us host, host the information, it's a little bit more, more expensive that way, too, because they're, they're actually hosting. But all the man-hours that it saves us, it, it's kind of, kind of, it's apples to apples almost. It's, it's, it's kind of balanced, either them hosting or us hosting it because we don't use the manpower to actually host it and have the servers and everything else, else here.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And for either one of you. So, I mean, our parish is very large land-wise, and we have a lot of students who go to school in zone, but we also have a high percentage of our students who go out of zone with our schools of choice. So does this program take that into account as far as the route planning? And is that gonna ease our pains with that part of the transportation? With getting the schools of choice kids across parish and things of that nature?
Yes, ma'am. It, it actually accounts for every single, every single person that rides in the district. And the good thing about the student tracking is, once the information's correct, we know exactly, especially, especially schools of choice in particular. In schools of choice, right now, we have no idea if somebody's gonna use one specific satellite stop over another, another satellite stop. And that can cause a lot of issues, especially with overcrowding and undercrowding. If, if we have, if we know exactly their parents are gonna use a morning stop right next to their home and an afternoon stop next to their business, we know exactly where our children are going. Right now, in schools of choice, it's kind of, it's kind of a hit, hit and miss situation because they can use anything. They can use any stop, and, and we don't know exactly which stops unless, unless we, we, until after we, we turn in our route reports from every single driver. And then we have to compile all that information into the, into the computer system to find all of our schools, schools of choice kids. Ahead of time, we can actually know exactly which, which is their preference on, on, on the stops that they want to get picked up in the morning and dropped off in the afternoon and have that information ahead of time. So when we revamp and rezone, it's not the cluster that we had the last time we did this. And, and as, as you, as you all know, the last time we did this and, and revamped the whole entire system, it was bad. When I say it was bad, if you don't remember, call me. I'll tell you some stories. You know, I wasn't here, thank God, but it was, it was, it was a situation that nobody wants to go through in, in the past. Promise you.
Let me add to that real quick, Dave. That's a great question, Ms. Morris. There's something in our, our software that, that's referred to as a, as a shuttle or something that's not a home-to-school route. And it's very easy to select multiple kids that are on a program and say, yes, checkbox, they're all in this program. And it'll, for reporting purposes, assign them a stop or a run automatically. And within the software, beyond the student's ridership manifest as that special is on there. So Monday, Wednesday, they're here, Thursday, they're here, and it shows up in one, in a time-saving fashion.
My second question is, we have looked at or seen a couple of presentations from Force Multiplier and Red Flex about the cameras, and it seems that they have a lot of services or products that are duplicate of what is being described here as far as the GPS-type systems and tracking the kids or having the apps for the parents. So is your, is Versatrans compatible with those systems? Would they be completely independent? Could we save some money by using some of those services from these other services if we choose to go with those? And you don't have to, they're kind of rhetorical questions. I just hope that you're looking at those things with those other services that we're looking at bringing in for our transportation also, so we're not duplicating services unnecessarily.
I'll answer that gladly. In, in general terms, absolutely, that on-screen product that I mentioned is, is GPS-agnostic. The, the product that we provide does engine diagnostics, is in the OB port, it's talking to the computer chip. It gives a little more. But we have many, many, I wouldn't say hundreds, but a lot of districts where we'll have a competitive GPS product that will bring in the GPS data so they can put it on the routing map. So if your camera has an active GPS, there's passive where it's on the hard drive, you have to go pull it. You can see the breadcrumb trail, but you gotta go pull the hardware out of the bus. The active, if it's a sophisticated camera system, can give you real time, and we can pull that in. But there's still a sales description, it is duplicative, you're right. But it can be done and we can bring it in.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you for letting me be here.
Mr. Evans, I have a question of you, not, not regarding this at all, so he can, you can do. But do all of our drivers who drive board-owned buses, do they all park their buses here at, at the, at the yard or?
No, we, we don't have enough space here, to be honest with you.
Some people take them home?
Some, some of them actually, actually, if they live, they live close to their route, they'll actually, actually park near their, their homes. Some of them park, park it like, like at Carrington High. We have about fifteen or twenty buses that park at Carrington High, the stadium. We have about twenty-five buses that actually park at Prairie. It ju, it just depends on, on, we, we try and use some of the schools that are close to, close to their routes. And some, some of them, they in their route right next to their house, and they'll, they'll park as close to the house as possible. We, we have about twenty or thirty buses that actually park here. It just depends on, on what's close to the route.
I know, I see some in the morning at Carrington Middle.
Yes, sir. We have, we have, we have a few at Carrington Middle. We've got probably about six or seven of them at Evangeline, Evangeline and Acadian Middle. We park some on the south side, some, some, some in Youngsville, Youngsville Middle, too, as well.
So do we account, do we account for the mileage? Like, let's say I'm a, I'm a driver and I'm, I'm a- So do we account, do we account for the mileage? Like, let's say I'm a, I'm a driver, and I'm, I'm a board driver.
Yes, sir.
I, I drive a board bus, and I bring it home, and I might wanna take a little trip to Lafayette for whatever reason, and I take the, and I take the bus instead of my car. Do we have, I mean, do you check all that kind of thing?
Right now, we, we can't. You know, we, we have, we have, we have nothing, nothing on record that we, we can actually check for extra mileage. That's where GPS comes in. You know, and we can actually, we can actually pull up what they've done in the past and say, wait a minute, why are you on a bus on a Saturday? You know, you, you, you need to explain to me why you're on a bus on a Saturday. Right now, we have no way to actually physically check that. In the future, if, if, if we do do something and, and do make a move to, to maybe another vendor or something, that's, that's always a possibility. Because they, they, they have those, those, those particular modules, and pretty much every company does. It's, it's a plug-and-play kind of a world now. I mean, it's, GPS is, is pretty, pretty easy to, easy to use, and, and everybody has, has a module. And it's, it's pretty much plug-and-play on that. Um, if we had that, we would, we would be able to track anybody. It, we, we could actually track, track somebody on, on a field trip that has to go to, on a football game out to, um, West Monroe. If they're playing in the playoffs or something like that. We could actually track that trip going up and coming down. Most of those trips aren't, aren't done in, in, in board buses, it's done with our contract drivers. Now, the contract drivers, you know, they, they might have a different point of opinion on, on this particular software. But it, it helps them and helps us, too, as well. Because they, they may be driving sixty-two miles a day, and, and they should be getting paid for sixty-two miles a day. But they haven't redone their route report, and their old route report says fifty-seven. Well, I'm gonna pay them what's on the route report. I can go every month and say, man, you averaged sixty-two instead of fifty-seven. We need to redo, redo, redo your route report. And you, you get paid, you get paid what you're supposed to be getting paid. You know, it benefits both ways.
Thank you. Yes, yes, Mr. Guidry.
Yes, I just wanted to mention, uh, that the options that we're looking at right now are, uh, either to piggyback off of a, an RFP that was put out by Calcasieu Parish, uh, or to issue our own RFP. Where, so, uh, we're planning on coming back with a recommendation one way or another. What we're waiting on right now is, uh, uh, legal response as to whether or not, when you piggyback, you basically have to mirror the, the services that were purchased by the other school district. So, uh, we basically took the listing of services that were requested in RFP. And we put it side-by-side with the services we're interested in. And we, our attorney's, uh, looking at it right now to make sure that, uh, well, to determine, uh, if we can piggyback or not. So, uh, we're waiting on, on a response by Friday of this week, and then we'll come back, uh, with the recommendation. If we're allowed to piggyback, you know, uh, I would anticipate that that'll be our recommendation. If the services are too different, uh, between, uh, those that we're looking for and those that were in the Calcasieu, uh, RFP, then our recommendation would be to, to issue an RFP for these services. So will we come back to the board, uh, with the recommend, uh, to the committee with the recommendation?
Thank you. Okay, then the, the other item on our agenda is the revised eligibility rubric for receipt of the two thousand and two sales tax. Fourteenth check, thirteenth check, and the interest check from the two thousand and one sales tax. So I don't know who's gonna, you gonna help us with that, Mr. Guidry? Mr. Lininger? I think, Eric, you have some questions? You had emailed some questions?
Okay. Okay, President Angel and Vice President Morris and Eric Kinesic? Kinesic? Okay, I guess the first thing that I would like to do before I entertain any questions is, at our meeting on December second, uh, you asked for several things to occur in terms of providing information on the revised rubric that you are considering. So the first thing that I'd like to do is identify on the revised rubric that you're considering. Cause I have three footnotes on that rubric that clearly identify some things to just be sure about where the information came from. Footnote one is this definition that's at the very top page, top of the page. Is the administrative plan, propos- uh, plan that went along with the two thousand and one sales tax proposition. And it's cited on page two, paragraph two A of the administrative plan. The second item was that, uh, Vice President Morris had suggested that we advise employees for, for eligibility that all items from A to D on the rubric need to be affirmatively met. That a no answer to any of them would disqualify someone. And that, uh, under item E, incumbents must occupy a job and have a signed job description for a currently budgeted position. So we added that information. And then if something changes, a person changes jobs where they are currently eligible and would become ineligible. Or the other way around, they're not eligible and they become eligible, that we clearly give them a document that defines that. And then the third item was there was some discussion about what an assessment teacher is. And Bulletin seventeen oh six and seven forty-six, which I've provided you with excerpts of, define an educational diagnostician, which is a replacement for the assessment teacher. And I can't get the, the definitive date. But when the, when the administrative plan was put together, the assessment teacher title was in vogue. And sometime after two thousand and one, or right at that point, Bulletin seventeen oh six redefined the assessment teacher to educational diagnostician.
Where is that in this? I have the seventeen oh six.
Okay, which one, which one do you have a question on, Mr. Kinesic?
You said that, uh, this bulletin redefines educational diagnostician as an assessment teacher? Or an assessment teacher as an educational diagnostician?
When the referendum was passed and then the administrative plan was written, the assessment teacher, which was included in the administrative plan, was something that, that was voted eligible.
Right.
However, sometime right around that period of two thousand and one, two thousand and two, or slightly later. And I contacted the state to get the definite date of the change. The assessment teacher was changed to educational diagnostician. And on that basis, in Bulletin seven forty-six, which you have an excerpt of, and you go to page forty-three, it tells you what the qualifications are for the educational diagnostician. The other thing that I've included in there are what are the requirements for a psychologist and a social worker. So you have the certification requirements. And I have Bart Thibodeau here, the Director of Special Ed. He can describe the different roles that are played on the pre- pupil appraisal team. And that pupil appraisal team is a separate salary scale, uh, is, that was developed. It's not based on a teacher's scale, it's a separately published scale that came from the state. So I don't know whether I've clarified anything for you or not.
Clarified my confusion. So I have another question on ROTC instructors, but I'm gonna hold that one.
Okay.
I don't know if anyone else is confused by this, but I believe some of our staff is con- is troubled and or confused. Because as I understand it, we have assessment teams?
Pupil appraisal team.
I'm sorry, pupil appraisal teams made up of educational diagnosticians, psychologists, and social workers. These folks, as it's, as it's been explained to me, and I think the board understands, that these people work as a team to form an assessment, to appraise. And, and whether we're using the word appraisal or assessment is the same, I mean, they're fairly close. From what I understand, their jobs are very similar. And they're all performing a task to appraise where a student is, whether it be socially, psychologically, or educationally. And how they're all co-dependent upon each other. And I think that obviously there's some confusion on why three members of one team, assumedly performing very similar tasks, are treated differently. And I think there needs to be some clarification, and that's kind of what I'm looking for is, what is an assessment teacher? And if the definition, is there a clear-cut definition? Cause I don't necessarily see a clear-cut definition, but it may still be in what's in front of me. Is an assessment teacher is a educational diagnostician. Or an educa- or, or an assessment teacher is not a social worker, or is not a psychologist, despite the fact that they work together as a team. And it even seems like from this bulletin on page eighty-four that, um, they're, that, you know, they're defined as a pupil appraisal member, team are those three categories. And what I, what I wanna make sure is that, is an assessment teacher a member of the pupil appraisal team? Which would include three different job descriptions? Or is a pupil appraisal, I'm sorry, or is an assessment teacher only an educational diagnostician?
I might ask Bart to answer that question, but the, the, the ju- the three job descriptions that I've found describe them as members of the pupil appraisal team. And there's three job descriptions. One is for a psychologist, one is for a social worker, and one is for an educational diagnostician. Now, there's also a school psychologist job description. And there's also some other variations of the educational diagnostician job description. But when you talk about them on the pupil appraisal team, there's very specific qualifications that each of the three members have to have to contribute to the student's appraisal. I think the common ground, and I'll let Bart clarify this, is that they all are dealing with the child to some degree or another.
I guess that's my, my question. If we did it, if we did it mathematically, does an assessment teacher, in quotations, equal, equal sign, right, an educational diagnostician only? Or does an educational di- I'm sorry, does an assessment teacher equal any of the three members of the pupil appraisal team? And that's where I see the confusion. I think that's where the employees also see the confusion is. We're all doing pupil appraisal. In our opinion, this is an assessment, you know, we are assessment teachers because we are assessing. The word assessment teacher does not clarify educational assessment, social assessment, or psychological assessment. And it seems like to me, because I've, you know, tried to educate myself on this, that according to the state, we are assessing the needs of the child, AKA an assessment teacher. And that's why when we, but, but, but we are smart enough that when we assess them, we're assessing them educationally, socially, and psychologically. And I'm okay, right, with whatever we decide. I just think that there's significant confusion among the employees, especially when you have this cohesive team that's supposed to be working towards this common goal. One's got it, two don't. And I think that's just one of the things that we, as the committee, need to try to resolve before we go back to the board with that.
Well, y- you mentioned something, and perhaps this is the reason why the title was changed to educational diagnostician. That you are indeed correct, that they're all involved in some kind of assessment of the child. But the educational diagnostician's role is distinctively different. If you examine the job descriptions, you'll see that probably ninety percent of the responsibilities for the diagnostician pertain to the educational quality and defining educational quality. For the psychologist and the social worker, there may, there are two or three bullets in each job description that talk about some of the same formative or summative needs of the student, and how the student's gonna be assessed. But they're secondary to the primary responsibilities of the two other team members. So at that point, I'll turn it over to Barton. He's really the subject matter expert.
Thank you. Good evening. Bart Thibodeau, Director of Special Education. Uh, Mr. Kinesic, I, I think your, uh, assessment of the pupil appraisal model is, is fairly accurate. By definition, pupil appraisal has to be a multidisciplinary team. Those three disciplines consist of the groups you discussed. The educational diagnosticians, the, uh, school psychologists, and social workers. All three of them are an integral part, uh, of that model. They're all required. That it's, it's, it's a model with three prongs, and they have to be in place. With regard to why there's a distinction with the educational diagnosticians and not the other two disciplines, I think would probably hearken back to what was, uh, told to you by Mr. Lininger. At one point, um, the ed-diagnostician title was assessment teacher. That's, that's what the title was. Um, it was changed to educational diagnostician. Moreover, the assessment teachers, as part of their credentials, have to have, uh, experience as a classroom teacher. We, we'll complicate it. All three of these disciplines have state certification, ancillary certification. But Lafayette, at that time, for what the, the reason was, was before I was here, decided that the assessment teachers would be included. If they were in the administrative plan, I think it went as far as they were, might even been part of the, uh, the proposal, the proposition at the time. So typically in other districts, those three disciplines, since they operate the same, they have the same goal in assessing children, they're usually standardized at a different pay scale. Here it's one point three three, some of the neighboring districts like one point two eight. There's no differentiation between the three groups, however. Lafayette is the only district that I'm aware of that has teased out the educational diagnosticians, uh, for salary purposes.
That's my point.
Yeah.
And that's what, I think, I mean, we're gonna keep hearing about this, and the next board after us is gonna continue to hear about this. We have three job descriptions that, as Mr. Barton has told us, operate the same, basically do the same job, have the same goal. They have different titles because they were hired under whatever different job categories. So I think that the solution to that is to define an assessment teacher, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, to be maybe, maybe it's as simple as an assessment teacher, because the definition changed at one point in history. That we now, as a board, define an assessment teacher as a pupil appraisal member. And then, you know, then we can refer, or future boards can refer to this bulletin and say, if we define an assessment teacher as a pupil appraisal member, because appraisal and assessment, I think, mean the same thing. Please, everybody in here is highly educated, correct me if I'm wrong. But appraisal and assessment essentially mean the same thing. So if we can say, or recommend to the board, guys, we think that they're, you know, I don't want to just say, because it's been done, or because a mistake's been made, or because things changed over the years, we're just gonna continue to kick the can down the road. I think we're at a point now where we can say, we define, you know, footnote, an assessment teacher as a member of the pupil appraisal team. And I think that simplifies it to us, because if the state one day comes back and says, you know what? Because of what we learned in psychology, we've decided that pupil appraisal teams now need to be educational diagnosticians, um, social workers, but we're gonna eliminate school psychologists, if the state says that one day. Or if they say it needs to be, um, educational diagnosticians, school psychologists, social workers, and nutritionists. Let's just say hypothetically, right? One day, we define nutrition as an essential part of an appraisal team. Then that, that new job description will still be a part of the assessment teacher. It's taken me a while to get this clarity in my own brain, but I think that the recommendation needs to be that there's a definition of assessment teacher, and they, the definition being a member of the pupil appraisal team. And that also would then exclude then- And that also would then exclude then a social worker and/or psychologist that is not a member of the pupil appraisal team, because I think Bruce, or I think somebody just mentioned that we have, we have people that are in these positions that are not necessarily part of the pupil appraisal team. And if any of that's wrong, please clarify, or if you disagree.
I think what you're referring to with regard to other professions that are not part of pupil appraisal, primarily, social workers. We have social workers in other departments.
So there could be social workers that are not part of the pupil appraisal team. What they're doing, I don't know. Maybe you could explain that to us.
Well, I manage the group that's with the pupil appraisal, but essentially you have school social workers under child welfare and attendance that might be assigned to schools for support, for student support.
That's a great example. That would not be an assessment teacher. That's a social worker that is not an assessment teacher. But what we do have is social workers that are assessment teachers. And that's what my recommendation is that to help clarify this with the social workers, psychologists, and educational diagnosticians, that we define that an assessment teacher is a member of the pupil appraisal team. So that's my first point, and I open that up for us.
I have a question along his discussion.
Yes, sir.
Let me preface it with, whenever we talk about this tax, I mean, we could get as technical as we want to, but by and large, it was a tax for teachers. You mentioned, and correct me if I'm wrong, if we're looking at the three-person team, we'll call it an assessment team, it seems to me, I heard you say that two of those people have to have been classroom teachers. Is that part of the job description or part of the requirement? Or did I misunderstand you?
One of those disciplines, the educational diagnostician, has to have been a classroom teacher. The school social worker and the school psychologist both hold ancillary certificates from the State Department, but the requirement to have been a classroom teacher is not present.
So two of them don't have, never have to have been classroom teachers?
Correct.
Now.
It's not to say that they weren't, but it's not part of the criteria.
Job description or the, or the.
Right.
So are they included in the tax?
Currently, it's only the educational diagnosticians.
And that's the one that had to be a teacher?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, now I understand why. Because that person was a teacher. I'm clear on that.
So that's, that was my question, and I guess we can talk about recommendations to the board later. Mr. Leininger, my second question was on the ROTC instructors. You say you have three incumbents, I know all three, right? We have one Navy, two Air Force, JROTC instructors. Are we saying that we're going to give it to one but not the other two?
Which job are you talking about?
ROTC instructors, the blue highlight.
ROTC?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, when, when we undertook this effort, we contacted the schools, I also did some work with Joe Craig on this because he has the school where the ROTC instructor meets the new rubric. And we simply have to, two of them that get it, get the check, just like the third one, all got the check, but only one of them would meet the new rubric.
With the other two, what, do we know which component of the matrix they don't?
Yes, sir. The situation is both, both, we're basically Acadiana, they do have rosters, they do grades, they do attendance. Probably out of convenience for the administration, the administration at Acadiana just continued to use the old teacher evaluation form and did not put the ROTC instructors in the state compass system and didn't require SLTs. I talked to the principal before the Christmas holidays. I said, for the second semester, can you, it's not unreasonable for them to have SLTs, for those, those teachers have SLTs for their rosters, and put those teachers in the compass system, and they will, in a bona fide manner, meet the definition of a teacher.
Right, and I, I mean, I would totally agree. First off, I think we're the ones, not us, you're the ones that should be defining the requirements. So you're the ones that should say, look, they're teaching military science, Air Force military science, therefore, they should be, they should have SLTs, which obviously, in this case, has a benefit for them if they do.
Absolutely.
Obviously, they don't.
And Acadiana's administration is willing to rectify that right now.
So then the answer to this would be yes. All three would qualify based on the rubric as well.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I can verify with the administration that that indeed has been done, and that would, again, that would bring a resolution to the ROTC instructors so that they're treated similarly across the district.
So while we're on that subject, we also have an example of an at-risk interventionist. It has been changed to no. There were three incumbents, one qualified, but two do not. Is that not a simple solution, therefore, we're changing it?
Yeah, the interventionists were put in place by Mr. Lemoine several years ago, and different schools work with them, utilize that person differently. I have spoken to administration at Como High School. They now have rosters and classes for that teacher. And they can, that teacher could develop SLTs. But at this point, the lady at Acadiana does not, is not in a similar situation. I can work with those administrators and see that they make them consistent. But in most of the schools, the other, the other high schools, they do have rosters, they do teach classes, and issue grades and attendance with SLTs.
It seems to me that this needs to be kind of a general rule based on the job descriptions and not based on an individual in the position. So for example, the ROTC teachers should all be the same. Either they all have SLTs and the requirements, or they don't. Same with the at-risk interventionist. It really shouldn't be dependent on how one school treats them versus another, because, you know, what if two years down the road, a new principal comes in and says, well, you know, I think you ought to get that check, so I'm going to give you the SLTs. That is not what the intent of this is. So there needs to be some consistency, and I was going to ask the same questions about why some were being treated differently. Like with the special ed and support teacher, I just, I don't understand this, but I'll let Eric finish his question first. But, I mean, this needs to be reliant on the job description, which is going to be stable, and not on the individual that fills those positions. So we need to decide whether those positions should get the check or should not. But it shouldn't be this one at this school does, and this one at that school doesn't.
Right, I mean, that's how we got to where we are today, is interpretation and implementation at different levels and different leadership styles or whatnot. And I mean, I think the effort we've seen over the last year is we're trying to add clarity and definition. And it looks like we're getting there. So the at-risk interventionist, I understand, then we will change to no, based off our analysis. Then there's the special ed community skills program facilitator, support teacher, special ed. It appears that that's an overwhelming no, because there are four noes across the rubric. Correct? Okay. And then, we're under the same, I think we all understand now, we are going to have it for the ROTC instructors. We're just going to implement the same requirements across the two high schools. Okay.
You're raising an important point that's not a philosophical point. When Dr. Aguilar and I, and Joe and I sat down and talked about examining the current rubric versus trying to propose something new, we said, what are the key components of how we're defined as a district? And on that basis, we went to the state standard, which is SLTs and a compass system for evaluation. But more importantly, with regular contact with the student, rosters every day. And I think President Angel, you mentioned at one point that your thought of a teacher was someone that you saw every day in a subject. Well, that's kind of hard to sort out when you have a system that's been set up based upon a lot of different rules that need to be followed. So I think the fundamental issue is that you have a sounder, more rigorous rubric that allows us to be more objective about the job, not the person or the peculiar qualities of leadership in a school. And so this puts you in a position to be much tighter on how you define who would be eligible based upon the original premises. And I don't know whether Dr. Aguilar would have liked to add anything to that or not.
Just, I want the board members to know, I think we're, we're getting very close to really identifying what's important in terms of eligibility for the 2002 tax. That we believe if you're going to receive that money, you should provide direct instruction. You should be evaluated on the compass system. You should give grades. So I think we're very close to really finishing up the work on this 2002 tax eligibility issue.
Well, I would, I think we're there. I mean, I'm talking to our committee here. I think we're there as far as recommending the rubric to go back to the board. Mr. Leininger, I think we need to clean up the at-risk interventionist. No, I'm sorry, that's not the one. I guess it would just be the ROTC and say, yes, three incumbents, all will be, you know, all are required to meet the rubric. And my recommendation, and I guess I'll make it a motion, would be that we define assessment teacher as members of the pupil appraisal, members of pupil appraisal. It doesn't call it, it says pupil appraisal members, it doesn't really call it a team as defined in Bulletin seventeen oh six. All right, yeah, let me clarify my words. So I move that we accept the 2002 sales tax, fourteen check eligibility rubric, with the exception of defining assessment teacher as pupil appraisal members as defined in Bulletin seventeen oh six.
I have a question. Your motion, let me wait till I finish. Does your motion, if the motion passes, does it now give teachers who are not, who are never teachers, part of the tax?
Well, this will, this is the recommendation, our recommendation to the board would be to accept this. And yes, if the board would approve this, and correct me if I'm wrong, we would give the social worker psychologists would be a change, along with the changes listed here, the green and the blue changes that are on here. So there would be a change in at-risk interventionist, a change. I don't know if intervention teachers changed or not. It's blue, but it's not, it doesn't say if it's changed. Special ed community skills would be changed to no. So we would have some yeses and some noes based off this rubric.
Mr. Kanesic, I just want to make sure you understand, we do have an educational diagnostician that's not on the pupil appraisal team, that's receiving the sales tax. And so if you want to add pupil appraisal, any, any educational diagnostician, since it's in, I'm not sure how you want to handle that.
I'm more concerned with those that are on the pupil appraisal team doing the same job. What is, what does the educational diagnostician do that is not on the pupil appraisal team?
She diagnoses dyslexia. Ms. Samick might can tell you more, she's her supervisor, but it's more dyslexia.
But that position is already included.
Right, so I just didn't want, if you, the motion you are making, is that going to exclude that person? I just want to make sure.
No, it doesn't, it doesn't exclude anything that's already included. It just adds clarity to the definition of assessment teacher, which will be inclusive of those social workers and psychologists and educational diagnosticians that are on the pupil appraisal team.
Okay, okay, that's great, thank you.
And maybe I'm understanding, but, so when the tax was originally passed, there were a few categories that were outside of teachers. The librarians, speech therapists, counselors, and what, something that was called the assessment teacher.
That's correct.
Since that time, the Department of Education has changed the phraseology from assessment teacher to ed diagnostician.
Which is specifically part of the pupil appraisal team.
So the matrix still uses the old term, because that's what was in the documents related to the tax, but the DOE documents now call it an ed diagnostician. And I think what Eric is trying to do is to make sure that our definition of ed diagnostician is broad enough to include all members of the pupil appraisal team, because they're all part of that diagnostician or assessment or appraisal.
Right.
Okay, so that's sort of where we're kind of going.
Yeah, the inclusive language in the tax is assessment teacher. That's what is approved. But the problem, as far as I can tell, is assessment teacher has evolved over time.
Right.
And again, we have people saying, you know, these people are doing the same job. So I would like the assessment teacher to be defined as something, and that being something that we can actually look at. And I think that is best defined by pupil appraisal team.
Right.
And just, just a point of clarity. I understand what you're saying. If you look at what it takes to be an educational diagnostician, and I have this state certification form, you have to have a master's degree, and then you have to have at least one year of experience in the certified area of special education. So you have to be a certified teacher in order to be an educational diagnostician. Because, and I'll get copies of the job description. So on that basis, what you're saying is, yes, the other people are involved in an appraisal and an assessment of a pupil. They have distinctively different roles, and they all contribute to student's success. So on that basis, you want to put them in as one group with the exception of one thing, and that's they're not certified teachers.
I think I followed you, but, I mean, just to make sure that I'm clear, I'm not disputing the definition of educational diagnostician, whether they work in pupil appraisal or not. My concern is the ambiguity with the words assessment teacher. Assessment teacher is an approved position for this tax. The problem is there's ambiguity in what is an assessment teacher. I think the best clarity for an assessment teacher, especially when I hear, you know, a director of special education tell us that their pupil appraisal team members, educational diagnosticians, psychologists, and social workers essentially work together and essentially do the same thing to assess and appraise our students, that there is a need to define assessment teacher. And that best definition, to me, would be members of the pupil appraisal team.
Well, it's the pleasure of the board.
I'm going to ask the same question. It's not clear in my mind. So as if this motion was ultimately enacted, would anything change in terms of those qualifications that have to exist for a person to be, to get that tax?
Well, you would discount all four of the new components of the rubric.
Right.
I don't think we discount, because the rubric includes assessment teachers. Assessment teachers are included in party, right? So assessment teachers do not have to have A, B, or C according to the rubric. They only have to have E. So what then is an assessment teacher?
An assessment teacher is the person who's qualified as an educational diagnostician.
But that's still what I don't see. I don't, I mean, I have everything in front of me. I don't see a bulletin or a definition that says an assessment teacher, and that was my discussion earlier. I don't see anything that says assessment teacher equals educational diagnostician. I do see that educational diagnosticians work alongside our school psychologists and social workers as part of our pupil appraisal team. And I still can't see how there's a difference in pupil appraisal or teachers that are doing assessment. And I'm, I'm looking for, I've looked through the documents, I'm looking for a definition that says, you know, A is equal to A. you know, A is equal to A, or not A is equal to A, B, and C.
Well, I guess, for sake of a, and again, it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter to me. I've done what you asked, give you the information. If you have a team, and I'm going to use an analogy that I think might be an appropriate analogy. You have a football team and they all have the same goal. They, they have the goal of either preventing a touchdown or score or making a touchdown or a score. So that means that the center, tackles, guards, tight ends, split ends, wide receivers, fullbacks, quarterbacks, all have the same purpose and goal. So they all have some common characteristics to their mission. But they all don't get paid the same way and they all don't have the same responsibilities or qualifications. And on that basis, that doesn't mean that they all are treated, for the sake of the argument here, equally. But that's the, the challenge of the decision that you have to make.
Right.
You say they all are or they are not, or one is and one isn't.
I see it if, is we're saying that the football team, assessment teachers, regardless of their position, those doing assessment, um, are included as part E. I mean, to me, the confusion again goes back to we include the words assessment teacher, yet we don't define or I can't find any clarity in the definition of assessment teacher. And we are including one of three team members of pupil appraisal. Um, so again, I mean, we can talk about this more, but my recommendation is that we define pupil, I'm sorry, assessment teacher as a member of pupil appraisal. And if one day the state changes those requirements, then obviously those people will or won't be included. It would be different if, um, Mr. Bark came up and said, these people don't do the same job. You know, but you didn't. You came up and you said, they're a team, they have a common goal and they essentially do the same thing towards that common goal. They're assessing, they're appraising the pupils. So... Thank you.
So Eric, uh, what you're saying is that, I understand, I, I mean, I think I understand, I just want to make sure, but right now, if you, if you used to be an assessment teacher, now you call it a, a educational diagnostician, is that what that is? Under this rubric, you would automatically be, be included for the, for the thirteenth or whatever check we're talking about, for the tax, right? Right, because of item?
Yeah, because of item E, you would, that's correct.
I understand that. However, what he's, what he's suggesting now is that we add people to item E. That is school psychologists and, and something and
Social workers and psychologists.
That's correct.
But he's adding people to the tax that collects the check from the tax, is that?
Correct. I would be adding social workers and psychologists, um, that, that are only on the pupil appraisal team. If you are a social worker or a psychologist not participating or not as a part of the pupil appraisal team, then you would not be eligible.
Because I think we're getting back to what the original intent was of including what was called assessment teacher to assess the children. And that now, that assessment teacher includes that team that assesses the students and the three categories that Eric mentioned.
And I take it that the assessment teacher is the one that had to be a teacher? Yeah, right, right, now it's, it's the diagnostician that has to have been a teacher.
That's correct, Mr. Angel.
The other two don't, right?
That's correct. A, a special ed teacher, not a, not any other certification in the area of special education. Which is a specific, uh, certification.
Yeah, we'll, we'll call for the vote. Can I vote with this screen here? I know it's going to screw up, I'm going to screw it up.
Two for, one against.
All right, so the motion carries. Do we have any other discussion under this item? But, Mr. Thibodeau?
I'm sorry, do you have your mic on, please?
Do now, thank you. The community base, there, there currently exists two job descriptions that, that are so similar that they could actually be collapsed into one job description. The group of, of teachers that, that are performing those tasks, the way it currently is set up, two of those, uh, roles actually, um, are constituted teacher for the, for the check payment, two are not. All four are in the same program, essentially doing the same duties. And yet those, those two are teased out. When we looked at the, the job descriptions, they, they could easily be, uh, collapsed into one job description to cover that entire group. And I want to bring that up because you mentioned them specifically. So I just want to help clarify that.
Yeah, I think that's a HR and staff issue that needs to be brought to the board for clarification of job descriptions though, more than anything.
All right, thank you.
No other discussion? This meeting is adjourned.